One, I wouldn't like to, it being four o'clock, I would like to bring the joint review board meeting to order. Is there any changes to the agenda? If not, I would take a entertain a motion to approve the agenda. And just as a side note and housekeeping, those that are able to vote are actually those on the joint review board committee. Can I get a second? All those in favor? All right, motion carried. Second, I will do a roll call of the joint review board. So number one, Christine Dorsey. Oh, yeah, you're not on the board yet. She will be actually affirmed at next. So Scott Buck. Amy Van Stratten. Dave Morick. And then last is myself. All right, and next on the agenda, item three, consider and appoint and or affirm of the joint real joint review boards public member. And that is Christine Dorsey. She already has been appointed by the mayor at the June thirteen council meeting. So we would just need a motion to affirm that appointment. Motion has a first and a second. All those in favor? Motion carried. And the next item on a gen on the agenda is for, and that's election of a chairperson. So amongst the four individuals on the joint review board, one of us need to be a chairperson.
Since you're doing such a good job.
I will accept that nomination.
Oh, second.
All right, so there's a first and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carried. And next we will go into the discussion of the responsibilities of the joint review board. And I will turn that over to Phil Kossen. Phil Kossen has been our consultant with our current two, three, and four, working us through all of the nuances of how this works. So we will give him the stage and he will go through our item number five, which will be the our responsibilities as a joint review board. And then he will talk about those project plans.
All right, thank you, Judy. Well, first, I wanted to thank everybody for serving on the board. It's always good to have full participation from the other taxing bodies. The city hasn't been involved in in really tax increment district work for quite some time now. So this is relatively new for the group again to go through this process. So what I want to do is I'll just talk a little bit about process one, and then I'll talk about your responsibilities. And then I'll jump into the project plans. For those that have not been through this process, I'll maybe spend a little bit more time talking about what TIF is. It's a concept that has a lot of misinformation out there about what it is. So don't hesitate to ask questions if you have questions along the way. Just as a point and Judy referenced this, this is the joint review board at this point meeting. So I know there are others around the table, but it's really the the joint review boards meeting at this point. So process wise, there's really three approvals that are required to create a tax increment district. The first is and in or in order, the joint review board tonight organizes. That's really all we're asking of you tonight is to select a citizen member, select the chairperson, listen to the information that's being presented. And then you'll see later on, we'll ask you to set another meeting date. So tonight is informational, so you're not under the gun yet to make a decision as to what you're doing. So informational tonight and then later tonight at five o'clock, we do have a joint, we have a plan commission meeting where there'll be a public hearing on both of these project plans. And what we're asking plan commission to do is two things. One, to hold a hearing and then two, if they're comfortable with everything they hear from the public and comfortable with the project plans enough, they get they will then adopt the resolution to forward it on to the city council. And the council's action then will take place on August tenth at their regular scheduled meeting. So first approval to kind of move things forward is plan commission. Second is city council approval on August tenth, and then it'll come back to this group, the joint review board for final action. So by then, why I went through all that is what are your responsibilities? Your responsibilities are really to review the public record, which is going to be the project plans and any variation. Now, this is still draft form until we get public input and and such, so it will modify. To review the resolutions, there'll be a resolution adopted hopefully by plan commission and also by the city council. And then you'll have a final resolution, joint review board members at your next scheduled meeting. So it's your responsibility to kind of review all of ours and answer the but for question. The but for question is really the fundamental question behind TIF. And that is but for TIF with the development occur. And we have to be able to answer that through this process. And we'll talk about that as we go into the project plans a little bit as well. So you're you're off the hook a little bit tonight. You're really just kind of learning, listening. And then if you want, and if you think there'll be participation by by public members tonight, the plan commission, you can hang around and listen to see if what kind of input there may be from the public as it pertains to the project plan. So that's process wise and what your responsibilities are. Do I'm going to go into the project plans next? All right, so we have two project plans that we're bringing forward. And they're really distinctly different project plans. Thanks for pulling that up, Chad. I do have a few extra copies as well. I don't have a lot of extra because I don't know if plan commission members are going to want paper copies or not. But you could probably follow along here as well. So we'll start with Ted number three. And I'll start by kind of prefacing prefacing the tid law a little bit because the tid law has gotten to be a little bit cumbersome. I've been doing this twenty five years and the law has changed pretty much every year for twenty five years. And so what happened is that back in nineteen seventy six, when the law was created, there was specific purposes that were laid out for for tax increment district. And then through time till now, the law has modified for a lot of different reasons. And many times it modifies to be able to react to kind of what the needs are, perceived needs are by the legislature for municipalities to get involved. It is the primary and really the only major economic development tool in the state of Wisconsin. Other states have other options. We work in multiple states and there's a little more a variety of options available to other other states and municipalities of Wisconsin. If you want to spur redevelopment, if you want to encourage development, then really TIF is is the game that you have to get involved in. The city is really kind of been on the back burner for a while. They had TIDS one and two that have closed out. So now we're on to TIDS three and four. So the law also sets the rules around any type of district you create. There's really four types of TIDS. There's industrial TIDS, meaning kind of industrial park areas. There's mixed use where there's multiple uses, housing and retail or commercial industrial mix of uses. There's redevelopment type districts where it's really just redeveloping like a block or or parcels within a block. And then there's another type of TIF that's very specific called environmental remediation TIDS, where you have a large remediation project that is needed to be dealt with. So there's rules and regulations tied to each one of those purposes that are cumbersome, to say the least, because they they've it's kind of evolved over a lot of years. So without boring you with all those details, we do two hour presentations on TIF one oh one just to kind of get all the rules and regulations out there. But what we have constructed here in both districts fits the requirements of the tid law under mixed use types type districts. So a couple of things about mixed use districts. One, and maybe most important, it is a maximum twenty year life. And there's no ways around that. The district can stay open for twenty years and or until you've collected enough revenue to pay off all the obligations. Statutorily, you're required to close out the district at that point. If it's early, that's fine. But then, once you've paid all your project costs, you just can't keep it open to keep it open and collect revenue. So that's that's one. Two, you can spend money for fifteen of those twenty years and recruit back through the tax increment district. So there's a long window, used to be five or seven years, depending on the type of TIF, which is foolish, because we used to in five years, spent a ton of money, didn't know if you had the revenue to pay it back. So now they give you a longer leeway, which is helpful. The second is you have to have two land uses in the tax increment district. And you'll see more in four than three, where we've had to deal with that that component. The other, where there's a housing component, is that you can't have more than thirty five percent of the area be for newly planted residential. So the legislature didn't want for tax increment districts that that were just purely subdivisions. You know, we're going to create a subdivision and that's all it's going to be. There has to be other components to it. And then within that thirty five percent newly planted, it has to have a density of three units of a three units per acre or greater. They wanted higher density. So one acre lots or three acre lots kind of thing is out the window. So what you find in tax increment districts, a lot are condominiums, multifamily housing as as the need is out there for for those type of products and communities. I would guess I probably have twenty TIDS going right now around the state that all of them have a housing component. And the reason is all we hear from everyone is there's a housing shortage, housing shortage, housing shortage. And as much as people, I live in an apartment, and I don't think I was a bad person. You know, a lot of them are apartments and it doesn't make it bad. It's a transitional way for people to move into a community, get established, or then and then move up and into a single family housing. So a lot of them are are multifamily components that are built into these tax increment districts. So Ted three, I'll start with the we've been talking about this district for a long time.
Six years.
Yeah, well, you say six, I was going to say three or three to four years. But I've been involved for three to four years of of various developers that have looked at these parcels. So if I could have you jump to page number. On page number seven of the project plan, I just want to get oriented here a little bit. This is the area, this that's the southern area only. There's a northern area also. Yeah, okay, so there's, thank you. So if you look at this, this parcel and all of you know this probably better than I do, even though I've worked here for quite some time. This is along the river and this area has been owned by the city for a while. I'm talking south of the river now. That area, there's been a variety of developers that have come in, have proposed certain things. We're finally to the point now where I think we have a development and a developer that the city is very comfortable with and a proposal that's moving forward for that site. But, and here's the but, the problem with that site is that you have utilities that run through the middle of the site that are buried. And so as a result, until somebody brought forward an actual real plan for how to develop that site, the city couldn't get a good grasp on where the utility should be moved to. So there's a significant cost, roughly a half a million dollars to move utilities from that site, which quite frankly, no developer is going to going to want to deal with. They want a shovel ready site where they're they're not dealing with trying to deal with paying for upfront costs of of moving utilities. So as we started building off of that site, there are some parcels to, as you can see, smaller parcels that we think makes sense that could redevelop over time that we think makes sense to be a sense to be in the project plan as well. So that's the southern kind of the largest block that's in green. As you go north across the river, we wanted to pick up some of the downtown area for redevelopment potential and to address other things like parking downtown. Parking downtowns are a big topic, no matter where I am, city of Milwaukee or city of New London, parking is always an issue. So we'll see one little bump out to the north. That is a a lot that that the city would like to see become a parking lot. Well, improved parking lot to really benefit much of the downtown businesses. We also feel like there's possibility of redevelopment into the downtown over time. Remember, this isn't just looking at twenty twenty two or twenty three, we're looking at a twenty year window for things to occur. So including the downtown, we think makes a lot of sense within this area. There's also public improvements needed on Water Street that will be you'll see as part of the project plan. We fully understand not all of that can be paid for out of TID because it's going to benefit a larger, the the broader community. But a portion of that cost, we would like to see allocated back to the tax increment district as well as South Pearl Street, some improvements on South Pearl Street. Going south, these are also areas that we feel that there's some vacant areas that have the potential for development and redevelopment. There's some other parking improvements that are needed to support businesses in that area as well. So we've included those parcels going south to be able to pick up and and hopefully benefit, the city can benefit from some some money to help drive some development in that area and some public improvements in those areas, like parking again, to support those businesses. So that's the boundary area. There's a lot of maps in the project plan, but that's the actual boundary that we're looking at. So Chad, if you can go back to page number three in the project plan, we always put together kind of a quick hitting executive summary. So the the developer on the south, I see they're on the call, I saw they were calling in as well. But SC Swodorski is the developer on the southern parcel along the river. They have experience in developing in this general area and outside this area. I know the city has had a lot of communication discussion with what they're bringing forward as far as the potential development. So we are looking at creating the district under the statutes, which is the multifamily statute. The reference there, under the project cost, this is fluid at the moment. And the reason being, we're working through very draft development agreements with with SC Swodorski. We're we're going to be asking them to provide a minimum value guarantee for what their project is going to is going to assess out at. And what I'm using is a very, very conservative four point four million dollars. At this point, I think it's forty, is it forty two or forty four units? It is forty four units that they're looking to build out over a couple of phases. They've provided a pretty good information regarding what their costs are going to be. The city's assessors looked at that. And we'll come together as a kind of a more refined number of what the minimum value guarantee will be. And why why do we put a minimum value? We want to see a high level product being built along the river. And so by putting a minimum value guarantee, we're kind of guarantee, having them guarantee to us is going to be high quality development. And we then we have a better feel for what revenue is going to be available for these other projects that the city would like to see, like the parking and some of those other improvements as well. So that's a very conservative estimate. At this point, we think it could be upwards, more closer to five to six million dollars when it's all said and done. We are looking at, if it's four point four million, we're looking at that supporting about a million, two fifty in project costs. I'll talk about those in a little bit. And in doing so, we're really looking at the full twenty years ahead to be able to pay this back. Now, if that four point four number becomes five million, we expect to come back with a modified plan, which will increase the actual project costs a little bit as well. So that's a little bit fluid at this point. So I'm doing a lot of talking, any questions so far? I'm used to talking a lot. So I'm going to jump around a little because some of the exhibits probably are are kind of more internal than anything. So if you go to pages number fourteen and fifteen, one of the things that we're required to do is identify all the parcels identified in the project plan. These are all the parcels that are located in the tax increment district. When you add up all the ten point five seven acres, which is what we're talking about, the value that is currently two million, three hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, that's important for a couple of reasons. One, that's what's called the base value. And the base value is established as of, in this case, one one of twenty one, what the value was at that point. And the base value, that two point roughly five million dollars, when that's collected for the next, however long this TIF is created, will be distributed to all the taxing bodies. They'll all get that base, a chunk of that base value like they do right now. So that doesn't go away and it doesn't all stay with the city. The school, the county, and technical college will all get their piece of that as they always have. That's the base value. Anything that is built above that two point five million or sorry, two point three five million, anything above that is increment. And that's what the city is going to use then to pay for these costs. So just the new value that's being created is what is going to be picked up and and used to pay for the development. So I talked about the SC Swodorski development of four to five million dollars. That is what the city is capturing, retaining and using to pay for the five, pay for the project cost. None of this, this will get distributed like everything else does at the same tax rate. That will look exactly the same as it always has. We are required to put in a project plan, a listing of potential projects in descriptive form. That starts on page seventeen and really runs for a number of pages. I trust you all read this already, so you know what I'm talking about. I'm just kidding. I know better. So if you go to page twenty two, Chad, the one thing on page twenty two that I want to note is that a portion, whenever a public improvement is identified as potentially to be paid for out of increment and it's located outside the boundary of the district, it has to be within a half mile of the boundary district. But we have to specify what those projects are. So you can see a portion of North Water and North Pearl Street. Is it south or north Pearl Street?
North.
It is north, okay, thank you. So I had that right. So so what we are identifying is that those improvements, while they'll benefit the TIF, are just outside the boundary of the tax increment district. They're adjacent to in this case, but we are looking to pay for a portion. We have to specify that in the project plan as well. So if you go to page twenty five of the project plan, these are the project costs that we've identified. Again, we expect these might may, these will probably modify a little bit. So the project costs are identified here as the utility relocation I referenced earlier, five hundred fifty thousand. Some downtown parking improvements of a hundred thousand hours. We have North Water Street improvements and just that we put three hundred twenty five thousand as TID eligible. The project costs is what roughly Judy, do you know, and North Water Street is, it's a big project. So it's a small sliver of that.
Just like North Water Street?
Well, we have Pearl and North Water together.
Yeah. Six million?
So we're not allocating a lot of TID revenue to pay for just a small piece of it in both cases. And then some parking on Pearl Street as well. We also have included in for the downtown, some downtown kind of beautification, streetscaping that may be eligible as well just to kind of help with some of the smaller businesses downtown to kind of beautify that the downtown Water Street area. And then there's setup costs that include our fee, include the city attorney's fee, your engineer's fee, et cetera, to set up the tax increment district. So where I think this could modify a little bit would be the portion items three and four, which are the Water Street and Pearl Street. We may bump that if the valuation coming from Swodorski increases. We may allocate a little more money to help pay for those projects as well. So those are the project costs on page twenty seven are the are the housing development and some miscellaneous development. Again, where we visit this, I had four point two million only for Swodorski. I think we, I think that number will grow a little bit. I have some miscellaneous development at some point. You know, if you remember the site next to Swodorski, there were some lots next to it. And certainly I have the potential for development. We're not counting on a lot from that, but that certainly could be a bonus. And if it does develop, it certainly would have the ability to be able to pay back the TID a little quicker as well and and close it out earlier. We are required to put in on page twenty eight, an increment sheet. And if you like numbers, like I do, this this will be dizzying and understandable maybe, but three things on here to point out. One, we're just pulling in on the third column from the left under value added, that four point four million. Okay, that's that same number. Two, we're we're using a equalized, cities equalized flat tax rate right now, which is twenty two fifty. And we're keeping that constant going forward. And then three, we are counting on some property appreciation just in the TID area. And we're using one percent on that. So those are the three kind of normal normal assumptions that we would make, a flat tax rate, one percent appreciation when there's a housing component. And then the the same numbers from the value add. So in the tan column that says tax revenue, tax increment, that's the revenue stream that would come in if if it builds out at four point four million and it generates around two million dollars of increment through the life of the district. We may not need all of that at the end of the day to pay for these costs. But we'll see kind of how it all plays out. And then finally, on not finally, but on page thirty is a cash flow that we put together that really looks at bringing this all together, how it all be paid for. One thing I can promise all of you is that this is going to look different than I forecast. I don't even know what I'm doing tomorrow, besides twenty years from now. But we have to make a ton of assumptions in here. And we do, I mean, I've talked about the development assumptions, the project costs, how are you going to fund it? Now, I'm just using a very simple state trust fund loan right now to fund some project costs. It's it's a little bit high right now in interest rate versus what the market is. But if you don't borrow money for a few years, you know, we just use that as kind of a simple guide of where rates could be. And you can see this pays off if you go a little bit lower on that page, it'll pay off by the end of the life of the district. So it's a requirement that we put that in in the project plan. Starting on page thirty one and running through page thirty six are all items that we have to talk about in the project plan. First is annex property. Here we have no annex property. It's all been in the city for a long time. How much of it's going to be devoted to retail? You know, I, you know, we're including some of the downtown, but the majority of the development is housing. But there could be some retail that's built as part of this as well or commercial. On that page is zoning ordinance, you know, what changes may need to be made from a zoning perspective, how it fits within your master comprehensive plan and does it fit within your building code and ordinance? So all of those things are really dictated by your normal policy and practice when you go through through this. uh are really dictated by your normal policy and practice when you go through through this. Um, section thirteen, we're not expecting anyone to be displaced as part of this. There's no relocation. Uh, and we think this this certainly as an infill type development certainly promotes kind of the orderly development of the city. Um, and that's, you know, kind of an easy case to be made since um, you know, it's been sitting vacant for quite some time um on that site and would like to see that develop. It will, you know, development there will will spur additional, you know, um. Different additional individual more, you know, using the services of the city and and downtown and frequenting downtown businesses, et cetera. So those are the requirements that we identify in here uh as well. And then finally, on section fifteen, the last sentence in there is we identify that costs related to the reconstruction of uh North uh Water and North Pearl Streets are um, we're only picking up a small portion of that, the large six million dollar project that is uh, a non-project cost uh as well. So those are the elements of the project plan. Uh, two things I want to just mention before we ask for questions. One. Um, because I think it's a misnomer. This is really a financing tool as much as anything else, not a planning tool. Uh, and it doesn't circumvent normal processes that the city uh would have. So any development by Swodorski or anybody else in the TID would bring forward to go through your normal review process, go to plan commission and be approved by this by the city council. This doesn't change that. They still have to go through the same process. Just because costs are identified in here, it doesn't mean they're automatically going to happen. They have to be authorized by the city council as well. So this doesn't change the normal process of funding or approvals. But it's a financing mechanism that gives you the ability to pay for it out of a separate fund uh created by the development that's occurring there and the taxes from the development that's occurring there. So that's it's a little bit of a misconception. Sometimes it's like, oh, I put this in place as a blank checkbook. Well. No, it still has to come in front of the city council for any expenditure. And if you don't like the development agreement, or if you don't like Pearl Street or some parking lot, that'll get bogged down like any other project will at the council level. So in here, it gives you the ability to to fund it, but you still have to go through the normal process.
Right. So on the infrastructure that um he was talking about, that's a half a million dollars. That needs to be moved. That will all come before city council. So you can look at it and you can see what the intention of that is prior to it getting done. So you'll have, it will have a process before it's actually completed.
Yeah, just like the review of the development, you're going to have that in front of plant commission. You'll go through your normal process, the bill to approve, anything they do as well. So I I went through a lot quickly with Ted. Three other questions of the JR B members.
Maybe one of the questions I had uh for years, uh, one of the ideas that was thrown out.
Put your microphone down so everyone can hear you. Otherwise, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, was a bridge across the river, the walking bridge. I assume that isn't in the original plans here.
That has not been identified as a project cost right now.
But if that came up at some five years down the road, let's say, for example, all of a sudden, we have a bunch of people say, we've got to have a walking bridge across that river. Can we pay for it with this?
Well, we'd have to go through and do an amendment, Dave, um, which you can't. Uh, you could have, I didn't mention, you can amend the project plan boundaries up to four times. And you can amend the projects often. I mean, as often as you want to go through this process. But you have to go through the same process, get the joint review board together. Uh, and gets them to approve it.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's it's a, it's not eligible as it stands right now. We'd have to bring it back to the joint review board for approval.
Even if that project isn't within a half mile of the?
It would have to be within a half mile.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you you still have to go through the process, even if it's, okay.
You do.
Just to clarify.
Any other questions of the members? Amy, anything from you? Nope, okay. All right, uh, then I'll jump to to Ted number four. Um, a little bit different uh in what we're doing here. We um. Uh, the city's been meeting with various developers and and maybe if you want to, I won't have to give the the long TIF talk this time.
And Randy is here. If there's any questions for Mr. Retsloff, so.
So we have a a project plan that's been put together here again. Uh, again, keep in mind it's draft and it's always going to be draft through the process until we get to the joint review board. Again, when you schedule your meeting, it'll be final at that point. Because we'll have input from plant commission, we'll have input from uh from also from the uh uh council at that point. So if you go to page seven, um, Chad, we um we have a map here also. Um, so this is to orientate a little bit. It's uh Beckett Road and is it Oshkosh on the very east side? So the uh, the um, the developer is here and uh Mr. Retsloff has proposed the uh development. A development uh on the very eastern boundary of this, uh, which is two different components.
Western boundary.
Sorry, western, thank you. Western boundary of this, two different components to it on the southern uh closer to Beckett Road is multifamily. Uh, and then single family, uh, that would be a above it. Um, the uh, single family um would not be included in the tax increment district, or the majority would not. And I'll get into why not in a little bit. Uh, the multifamily would be uh in the perhaps or in the in the boundaries. Uh, we are um, we have kind of a a challenged, I'll say, uh, boundary here for a couple of reasons. I went through. I talked a little bit about, you know, why you have to create a boundary like you do. Um, and, you know, to pick up a second land use, we went all the way over to the east of Oshkosh area and north. Um, and picked up additional uh retail that's in that or commercial in that area uh to pick that up. So this is to, in nutshell, this is to assist with uh the expansion of Southland Road. Um, Chad will show you where that's going to kind of go. Uh, Southland Road will will kind of cut through this development. It'll help with the both the single family and also with the multifamily from a access from traffic flow and everything else. Uh, and the TID will also assist in the future with helping to pay for some improvements on Beckett Road. Uh, that'll be needed and potentially even on Oshkosh uh in the future as well. But I I mentioned some of it in and some of it out of the TID, and that was done on purpose for two reasons. One. I'm a firm believer uh that development outside the TIF is as important as inside the TIF. And it benefits the other taxing bodies as well. If you see development right away outside the TIF. And in this case, we had kind of a nice logical break between single family and multifamily. So we pulled in just the pulling in just the multifamily and maybe one lot or two lots possibly of of the single family. But the the vast majority will be uh located outside the TIF, and so that development will hit the tax rolls right away and uh, everybody will benefit from that. Second, if you recall, I talked about that thirty-five percent test, uh, not more than thirty-five percent. And it helped to break apart this so that we didn't have to pick up so much land outside of the the development uh as well. So a couple of reasons that we broke this out. Um, like most communities, housing is a real need. Chad, you have a comment?
I think we talked about this um like a week ago that we are probably, if we're going to pull out a bunch of the more, because right now, the way it's shown. Um, because we didn't really have the CSM quite developed when we started doing this. So this line right here will more than likely come down a little bit.
Right.
Because the multifamily boundary is about in here. So and and there's going to be a row of single family on the southern lane, the southern lane. So we need to decide to pull that down a little bit in this plan.
Yeah, yeah. So it it there'll be a a revised uh boundary map that's going to uh better match the CSM that's been filed. Like, I say it that way. So it'll it'll look a little bit different than it is now. Um, but concept is the same. It's it, we're breaking out and making sure the single family is is going to stay out of the tax increment district. Southland Road, um, the agreement uh tentative, very tentatively, I just talked to the developer's attorney this afternoon. Uh, is that um, there'll be an incentive provided to the developer uh to help pay for a portion of Southland Road. Uh, and it'll be paid for over time uh in what's called a a pay-go. Uh, also, what's called a municipal revenue obligation. So what it really means is the city's not going to go and borrow that money upfront. They're going to have the developer, work with the developer to put in the road, and then they'll reimburse the developer out of the revenue they generate. So out of their development, it'll be paid for. Um, and there'll be a split of revenue. I think we're still haven't fully resolved that, a split of revenue. So every dollar that comes in from their apartments will be split. So a portion goes to pay back that road cost to the developer and a portion will be retained by the city to help pay for yeah, the rest of Southland Road probably along with Beckett and and Oshkosh uh in the future. So that's the real kind of quick tentative, what we're talking about as far as the structure that has, we don't have a final agreement. I'll um, I promise that's exactly how it'll look, but I think conceptually, it'll be similar to that. So if you go back to page three, then um, like I, this is the executive summary. Again, uh, we're looking at project costs of roughly a million dollars. Uh, we're looking at development of uh anywhere from three to roughly five million dollars. I think we'll, well, again, we'll have a a number in a development agreement uh hopefully soon that will tie back to the project plan. So it'll modify a little bit once we get into the project plan uh development. For the joint, for the joint view boards, our goal is to have the actual development agreements ready for you also for final action. Um, which is a little, which is quick and and nice. I have a kind of a package coming back to the joint view board. Uh, we uh had to go through the same process, I'll say. Uh, but if you go to the parcel list on page fourteen, uh, you can see the parcel list has been identified. There's roughly a million seven seventy-six uh in the base value. Again, that will be provided to all the taxing jurisdictions during the life. And then really the development primarily from the from the multifamily is what we're using to help pay for uh Southland Road and and Beckett and and a portion of Oshkosh. We also, if you go to page number twenty, uh, had to define what's in the half-mile radius. And you can see that uh both Oshkosh and Beckett Road improvements uh are identified on page twenty as uh projects that are um uh within a half mile, but you know, partially improved. These again are large-scale redevelopment or large-scale reconstructions. Uh, and we're a small, small piece coming from Ted to pay for that. Project costs are on page twenty-four of the plan, and I talked about these already, the roughly, again, this, this is tentative right now, but four hundred thousand uh for Southland Lane that would be reimbursed back to the developer. Um, and then we have allocated another roughly half a million to Oshkosh and Beckett Road. That number may bump up a little bit again if the values come in more. And we had to go through the same process to generate, to show the increment coming in and cash flow uh as well, which looks very similar to the last project plan uh as well. And those are on pages twenty-seven. Same assumptions as I used through the other, one percent appreciation, flat tax rate and the three million one twenty uh value. And then the cash flow on page twenty-nine as well. There's no annexed property here as well. Uh, this is all land that's been kind of uh sitting in city boundaries, uh undeveloped for some time. And this will be a chance to see some additional housing occur um in in the city, uh, both single family and and multifamily uh as well. Uh, so that's, that's all I had on this. I know Chad or Judy, if anything else you wanted to add.
I guess one of the things I would reiterate is um the nice part about the boundaries, again, that Phil was talking about is that all of the jurisdictions will get um some of the benefit uh outside those boundaries right away of the um development that Retsloff is going to be putting in. So as you can see, Chad talked about, but that's actually going to come down even a little bit more. And that single housing development will hit our tax roll as those, as that is developed. Um, so that's a nice um incentive as far as uh that TIF four is concerned. Um, but it also gives the city um some revenue to help pay for. And as we all know, Oshkosh Street. Um, people have been discussing and talking about how the needs of that um street for a long time. So even though it, you know, it'll probably be um a third, probably not even a third, but a quarter or twenty-five percent. Any revenue that we can um gain through the increment in the building of this development is a win for the city to get those, any roads completed. Um, when it comes to um city finances, it's very difficult for us to find revenues to be able to do a lot of the construction um that we would like to do without going for bonding. And you hit limits when it comes to bonding and what people can afford and I'll, and you have, and you have also statutory limits on the amount of dollars that you can get um from bonding. So this is um like, I'll just reiterate what Phil said. Uh, very nice tool, the TID districts um for the city to be able to bring both of these um developments into the city. And hopefully, what it's going to do is add to the school districts, you know, and bring people into the downtown community. Um, and and that's what we're looking for is to grow. Um, we all know that the highway is going to be coming in, and I I feel like this is just a great opportunity for the city at this time, so.
Other, other, any questions of the JR B members? Um, informational tonight.
Just a question like on Asha Street and Becker Street improvements, um, how did you come up with the five hundred thousand? What does that represent? Is it?
It's a, it's a, it's quite frankly, what we could kind of back into to be able to help pay for is the projects are much larger, obviously, in scale than that. Um, I could tell you like, you know, water, water and pearl, we were, how do we, how do you solve a six million dollar nut? It's not easy, and this isn't going to, Ted three ain't going to do much of it, but it's a, it's a big, big project. It's a, it's a piece of it. Similar here, it's just a piece, it's just another piece of how you try to fund some of this. So it's a, it's a small amount of what it will cost.
So you look at the revenue that's going to come in in increments and you back into it. So you're looking at what is your commitment to the developer? So you have a million dollars five, four hundred to the developer, what's left for what, what can be used for infrastructure? And then hopefully, as um the developments are completed and and the values come in a little higher, those numbers can be increased and and maybe we'll have a little bit more for the infrastructure than what we thought. And those numbers are very conservative. Um, when the assessor looks at development, what you want to make sure always is that you're, yeah, what you're going to take in and revenue is solid. Um, and what else is going to help with that is those agreements that will be coming in. So um, the city should look at that as a real positive, but Chad has been working just numerous hours um working with those developers, getting those agreements done. Um, because then you have something to hold on to as far as um those developments getting done and the increment coming in.
In the phasing of the multi-purpose in single-family homes, is there a a scope of construction at the same time, single-family, multifamily at the same time, or focus on single-family, which would add to the revenue, tax revenue upfront, or is there a phasing plan that can be shared, or is that?
Um, if if Randy wants to pipe in, but from what I, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the multifamily is the focus first to get to multifamily and and then the next step would be single-family.
We're willing to go on the single family too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't know if we can really tie um the developer up uh in a development agreement for uh an area that's outside the boundaries of the district. However, um, you can be, make it very well-known, the council that they certainly want to see that move as quickly uh if possible, and um I think that's the goal for everyone. So if there's no other questions, I think we can get on to the uh meeting date.
Okay, do you have a calendar you can pull up for us, Chad?
Yep.
So I'm assuming this has to happen after council.
Yeah, so uh, we have a a class, class one notice that goes out, so um five days after it appears in the paper. So are you a daily paper?
No, it would be Thursday, the nineteenth would be the publication date after the council meeting.
I mean, you could be, it's up to you. We could have it in the paper on the twelfth and have it prepared and ready to go, and you could pull it back if you wanted to on the tenth. That's one option.
Does it have to be approved by council?
It would have to be approved by council.
The earliest is the nineteenth.
Yeah, because they, they, their job. Yeah, because they, they, their draft date is Monday.
Okay, so um, the nineteenth, then you, you're looking at uh the twenty-fourth is the first date.
I will be in California until the twenty-fourth, so I'd.
Sounds like the twenty-fifth.
Could do it by Zoom, I suppose, but. Prefer it be here.
I have another uh. Board committee commitment on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-six.
Here with the museum.
I will say this, I don't know availability. Uh, we do joint review boards eight in the morning sometimes, sometimes over noon hour, sometimes at five o'clock.
Yeah.
And people can't participate by, by, you know, virtually as well if that, if that works for people.
If you can zoom in from work, do you think that's?
Uh, if there's something in the AM or during the day. Prior to, there's more flexibility there, but this time it would be difficult.
Sure. If it was, as long as it works for the five of us.
The afternoon is not enough for me, but I can make it work.
How about you, Amy? Are you able to zoom in during the day?
Yes, what are, what time are we looking at or what day?
I, um, we would probably then.
It looked like, is that?
Going to the twenty-fifth.
I prefer the twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah, any, um, anytime after eight-thirty.
Two o'clock-ish or?
Two o'clock?
That timeframe.
Okay, how about two-thirty?
Three.
Okay.
And again, you could do it virtual. It's a, it's statute, they've, with COVID, they, it used to be a little bit more restrictive of being in person. Now it's, that's certainly an option, so.
Okay.
So two-thirty?
Two-thirty on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth. Anything else anyone wants to bring the? About or discuss? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So Scott makes motion, I'll, I'll second Scott's motion.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi, all right, we are adjourned. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks all.